Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Monday. It was nice that we ended up last week with Aloha Friday. I'm not sure about Monday. But anyway, welcome to the Committee on Water and Land. And today is February 12th. And we're in room 229. And today is Abraham Lincoln's birthday. But we all know our 16th president is long gone. But we can remember him for his wit. But we'd like to welcome everyone here. Just some housekeeping measures as well. Testifying those that are on Zoom. We ask that you stand in on your written testimony. And if it's, if your oral testimony, because you're on Zoom, different from the written testimony that we received, time limit for each testifier will be a minute. The content, including the hearing notice, copies of the bills, and testimony can be found on the legislature's website. The live video stream and archive of this hearing can be found on the Senate's YouTube channel. We will be making decisions after the testifiers. And we're end of the agenda. We have SB 2555 to start off with. And this is relating to the state boating facilities. And this establishes the facility lease pilot program within DLNR to lease one state small boat harbor for private development and management, maintenance, and operations in a county with a population of less than 200,000. DLNR. Aloha, Chair.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chair Noi, Vice Chair Alefante, and Senator Favella. Thank you for this opportunity to provide, to be here. So I just want to make two points. We stand on our written testimony. But I want to be very clear. This is not applied to the Aloei Small Boat Harbor. And it is not an administrative bill. But we do strongly support this bill. And we, I also have Dobar Staff here if you have any questions. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Budget and finance, sense communication with comments. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Noi, Vice Chair Alefante, Senator Favella, Kamakana Kamala, United Public Works. UPW stands on its written testimony, opposition. Happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presence as well. HGEA.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Favella. Nui Sabas with HGEA. We stand on our written testimony, strong opposition. Happy to answer any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Free Access Coalition. John and Rita Shakley in opposition. Bob Duer testifying for arbitrage news. IT.
Yes, Chair.
Is Bob Duer on Zoom?
Uh, no, he's not present on Zoom, Chair.
All right. Okay, he's usually on Zoom from the Big Island. And this is kind of like, not him. But I guess he's tied up today. In opposition, Margaret Hallahan.
Not present. Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, in opposition. Kate Thomas.
Kate Thompson.
Thompson, sorry about that.
I'm just gonna tell her go to Zoom. Thank you so much. Because I think she's standing by.
Okay. Are you gonna?
Yes, I'll testify.
You testify?
Yes.
Kate Thompson, Kamakina boaters. We have a group of 140 boaters in Hawaii. And we're mostly a Facebook group, but we do have occasional educational meetings. And I stand in opposition to this bill because I, I think maybe actually the whole idea of privatizing harbors ought to go to the ballot in the big picture. Because I think the community really wants our public harbors. I'm really grateful that Aloei is off the agenda for this year and appreciate the, the decision to do that. I am concerned about the vague language of the bill as it appears now. Because it doesn't say which harbor is being considered. It doesn't give any date that the lease would go. It doesn't give any price for the harbor or how the community would work with the developer in such a case. And I think it's just too mysterious to go forward. And that the, both the legislature and the public deserve more information in such a bill. And so I stand opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Doug Meller, sense communication, comments only. Catherine Lindell in opposition. Unite Here Local 5 in opposition. Nathaniel Fisher and Shailamur in opposition. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to SB 2555? Aloha.
Aloha. Aloha, Senators. Clayton Kubo, Waimea, Hawaii. I stand in strong opposition to this bill. It seems like what they're gonna do, they're gonna pick and choose who they want to use the facility, who they want to use the ramps. That's, that's basically, that's not right. Privatization is definitely, should be out of the question. I don't know whose bill is this. It's already public harbors. Yes, we have some privatization. There's no doubt about it. But who can use their harbors? I cannot, probably. Ain't no way. Because why? It's all about money. Mahalo for you guys' time. Aloha.
Okay. Aloha. Members, any questions?
DLNR.
Yes, Senator Favella.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Is privatization of the harbors, what would happen to the civil servant jobs? And then what would, what is the commitment for public working in use?
Aloha, Senator Favella. Nothing would happen with the civil servant jobs. They'd all retain their jobs. Oh, I'm sorry. Ed Underwood, Administrator, Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. Currently, there's two main mandates under the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. One, everybody knows, is the harbors. The other one is the coastal areas program. Our staff is supposed to do both, but they can't. By doing the public-private partnership with the harbors, we can free our staff up to engage in the coastal areas program.
So are you working with other agencies within the departments?
Yes.
This wouldn't go to Chomokolo from Tokyo running harbor?
No. We would have to follow Chapter 171 when it comes to leasing facilities. So there's statute in place now.
And Senator, if I could just add, this is a pilot project. If it doesn't work, then it, you know, it can be taken out. But I mean, I think we recognize we just want to do a better job managing our facilities. And so starting with a pilot project may be the opportunity to explore those other options for management.
Well, thank you, UPW. And HGEA. UPW, what is, what is your guys' concern on this bill?
Sir, my concern is, um, it's a 20-year pilot project, yeah. And although it provides, well, it says it provides for the transfer of our members to a different facility. The real concern is what happens if there's a perceived success here? You know, privatize this, what, this unknown facility at this point, their success. I mean, let's be real, nobody wants to manage small boat harbors. The likelihood is, it's just gonna continue on to the point where it's just a complete deradation of, you know, civil service or work that's been done historically by civil service employees. And that's, that's our main concern.
I mean, oh.
HGEA.
Yes, Nui Sabas.
Sorry. Sorry, same language over here. I heard I get bad habit using same language. Forgive me.
State your name for the record.
Nui Sabas, HGEA. You know, our, our concerns are similar. You know, this measure will likely displace our civil servant members. We appreciate that. And which also raises a lot of questions, right? Where will these members go? Will their pay be the same? Things like that, it's just very high uncertainty. So with that being said, we cannot, we must oppose this bill.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Any further comments or questions? Anyone else wishing to testify on SB 2555? Okay, IT, is someone on Zoom?
Yes, we have Margaret Hallahan wanting to testify for SB 2555.
Okay. Proceed, Margaret. IT, we lost her somewhere.
She's present on Zoom, Chair.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Aloha.
Aloha. Aloha. Thank you so much for letting me join. I oppose this bill. I would say in the past, the other private-public processes haven't gone that well, and nobody looks at them for oversight. For example, the Hilton Hotel with the Duke Kamanamoku Lagoon. That should be all for the public. But they tag it as it, as if it's private. And a lot of people think it's private and even go with the Hilton Lagoon word. And nobody oversees the big corporations. They just allow them to take space from the public. And, you know, we need to have boat ramps for our local communities. And we need to have slips available. It's not about the prices much because the Aloei and other harbors have raised their prices so much. But it's about access and the public having a voice. And if you lease it out, it gets diminished. And I don't believe that DLNR has done a good job over reviewing. So I really appreciate your time. And, and I hope that you do deep consideration and ask them to be more transparent and create more oversight on what their actions are.
Thank you, Margaret. Time's up. Thank you for your testimony. All right. Anyone else on SB 2555 hearing and seen done?
I'd just like clarification, DLNR.
Yes, Senator Favella.
And she just said the Hilton Lagoon is private. I mean, I thought there was public access to the other side. You can park your car, you can go in the lagoon. The only thing you gotta probably pay for, if, I'm not sure if you do, is those activity things, right? They usually come with the hotel, right? So the lagoon is actually free, though, right?
You're right. Don Chang with DLNR. Yes, Senator Favella, you're absolutely right. There's a, there's a public access to Hilton Lagoon. We do have oversight. Anytime there's a use, we, the board oversees that. We do monitor that. So I'm not sure where, where the public has not been permitted to access.
Yeah, I was working for Park City when we built the facility. So I know it's.
You know.
Open, okay. Just wanted to see if it changed.
If I may add, we currently, there's currently five harbors in the state operating under a P3 model. That would be Hawaii Yacht Club, Waikiki Yacht Club, K Marine Center, La Mariana, and K Wallow Basin. All operating perfectly well. That is an established model that the state should be following. And then we can really focus on the coastal areas program that we, that we really need to look at. Because there's so much commercial activity going on now from the shorelines and all.
But you just heard, the problem that I, I kind of getting an understanding is a civil servant job. This is a 20-year pilot program. And if we cannot, I don't use the word guarantee, but give a word, then our civil servants not gonna feed out. Because Aloei and all these private boat clubs or whatever, do they have civil servant workers?
Yes, all of them do. But right now, our program probably needs twice as many staff as we currently have. We, nobody's gonna go anywhere. They're staying with us. And they're all gonna be focused on the launch ramps, nearshore waters. And then we just would oversee the lease of the harbors. Because they spend probably 90% of their time every day processing paperwork. Or they could be better used out in the field and just hire somebody to come in and process the paperwork.
And Senator, if I may, the legislation specifically says employees shall be reassigned within the division without loss of salary, seniority, retention points, prior service credit, any vacation sick leave. So they're not gonna lose any benefit. And again, this is a pilot project. If it doesn't work, if we're getting too much pushback. But I think we're looking for different tools to better manage our facilities. And this one, we think, as, as Ed has said, has proven successful in other places. Not every, but not all harbor facilities are appropriate for P3. Because we do have a lot of recreational activities. But there may be more, there may be some harbors that are appropriate for this model.
Good, thank you, Chair. Appreciate your time.
Yes. Chair, just, just to add, I know there's been discussions previously. Last year, I think, my discussions with you as well and trying to communicate with DOT and see if they're interested in taking the harbors back again. And has anything, any communications being continued?
So we did meet, and we are current, and we continue to meet. So I have met with Director Sniffen. We've also met with staff, with his deputies and our harbor staff. So we, we have exchanged some documents. I would like to see that happen. So we're still working on it.
I know, we talked about it. Yeah, we talked about it last year. And, and so am I. And so, you know, it seems like DOT has changed a little, their attitude a little. It's more like, mm, you know, maybe, instead of, no, we don't want it. So just to continue the discussions and, and see what happens.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll continue. Anyone else? We're gonna close out SB 2555. SB 2721, and this is relating to ocean recreation. This clarifies that violation of Part 1 of Chapter 200 of the HRS relating to ocean recreation and coastal areas or any rules adopted thereunder shall be subject to criminal penalties. DLNR.
Thank you, Senator Noi, Chair Noi, Vice Chair Alefante, and Senator Favella. Don Chang, on behalf of DLNR. We support this test, we support this measure, and we stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Mahalo. Edwin Wadamura testifying for HFACT in support. Quicksilver charters. Zachary Laprade in opposition. Uilani Naipo in support. Okay. We received three support, one opposition. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to SB 2721? Hearing none, many questions, members. Otherwise, we'll proceed then with SB 2156. And this is relating to port infrastructure. This requires DLNR to create a strategic plan for maintenance dredging of harbors and port locations. Requires a report to the legislature and with an appropriation. DLNR, Dobar. Who's gonna speak on this one? 2156.
2156. So I'm gonna keep on coming back and forth on those that I'm just gonna stand on my testimony. I'll probably just stand right there. So this one, we, we support the intent of the measure. We are proposing amendments because we don't think it's necessary for all of our harbors. But we stand on our written testimony and are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. ADC, Wendy Gaddy. Mahalo. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Senator Favella. Wendy Gaddy with ADC. And we stand in strong written support of this bill. We think it's critical in order for the state to meet its food security goals and double food production to be able to move the products around from port to port based on the microclimates. I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Gemini Sailing charters in support. Edwin Wadamura in support. Ocean Tourism Coalition in support. Fairwind Cruises in support. Sailing Maui Inc. in support. And we do have three individuals, Uilani Naipo, Kevin Ford, and Eva Shaw in support. Zachary Laprade, are you on Zoom, IT?
Not, not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. We did receive his communication in support. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 2156? Members, any questions? I have a question. I think for Dobar, who's been, yeah. And Wendy. Now, we've, and, and you know, we've appropriated monies for the maintenance on the small boat harbor in Hilo. How are we doing with clearing the, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to call you. I was, I was thinking of, yes, her name. Sorry. Dire need. We appropriated the $3 million for small boat harbor maintenance for Hilo Harbor. But I'm happy that you all agreed that the dredging for the sand accumulation again, entry. I just received another very touchy situation. I don't know if you had the recent one. One of the boaters couldn't almost get back in. But now, where, where are we? I know you did indicate that as far as the permits to start is no problem with the agency. But then we do have the issue with the, not Coast Guard, but where's the other permit coming from?
Army Corps of Engineers.
The Corps of Engineers. And I am not happy that that's going to be the stall because they've been pretty much, it takes almost three to five months or sometimes even seven months for approval. Why is that? Is that?
Because it.
Because they, they have staff.
It usually takes, we can do this under a nationwide permit. It usually takes three to four months to get the nationwide permit. But we can't even begin the process until the money's released. And that didn't occur until this year on July, January 8. So now we start the design permitting phase of it. So best-case scenario, we're looking at, if everything goes right, we can begin dredging in June.
Wow. You know, most of them that have the boats there are pretty much, that's their bread and butter. And I mean, I was there last weekend. And I, you know, I think it takes minutes to get out of the harbor because we have a small boat harbor there. Boy, they just dreaded, I returned in 2014, here, 2015 session. And there was no dredging. So we must have been accumulating that sand for quite some time. So you probably, I mean, whoever preceded me in this seat probably did not try to get some CIPs for you to clear up the accumulation.
And I would just add, Senator Noi, I think what we're finding is that due to climate change, we're finding the changing environment is causing more sand to, you know.
But you know what? The Hilo one is like, I think, almost every year. So with the history that we have, do you know if it starts to accumulate yearly or every two years? Because my understanding, it's beyond seven years.
Yes, we've identified seven areas in the state that this, like North Kauai High on the Big Island, Hawaii Island. Thank you, is every year after the winter swells, we have to dredge. The unfortunate thing is, is we've tried to get a maintenance dredging scheduled five, six years ago, but we weren't successful. So we need the recurring funding.
Well, similarly to, to what this bill is all about, right?
Yes.
Now, and I remember the early 2000s. I don't think you guys were here. You, were you here?
'01 is when I started, yes.
Okay, so we talked about the groin. Can we look at considering, because it occurs consistently, almost every swell that we have in Hilo Bay, can we consider doing a groin? I think we talked about it years ago. So what's, what does Corps of Engineers think about this?
It's possible to build a groin. It's the circulation, how the circulation of the water goes in the bay. It picks it up from the stream and just brings it down the coastline. We thought about digging out the shoreline alongside the entrance channel, digging back.
Yeah, on the other side of Suishan.
Yes, and then let it deposit there. We could do it from land. So we don't have to keep touching the water. So those are other options we're looking at. And that can be part of a maintenance dredging schedule that we come up with.
What would it cost?
To do a groin. So you know, Senator, what we're finding is that groins, they cause other potential impacts.
I, yeah, I understand it, it affects certain areas here that it shouldn't be there. But what about the Hilo Bay?
It, it's possible. It'd have to be looked at to see how it would go. Like where, the repair to the North Kauai High groin that's in place but failed is estimated to be $8 million. So to build a new groin and mitigate for all the coral and live rock that may, may need to be done, it could be very expensive.
So I think what we're proposing is perhaps a short term? Maybe that's a longer-term solution, looking at, looking at, are there other things that we can do? But short term is having this recurring appropriation so that we can have a regular dredging schedule so that the boaters aren't faced with having to, having to wait a long time to get out.
Okay. In, because I, I believe that we are, for the boating community, for Hilo, we're, we're in a crisis. I mean, big time. Because every day, these guys gotta go get their catch. And, you know, I'm in the bay, our residents is. And I, I see, well, when I'm home on the weekend. But the boaters are coming back in. And, and I know how long it takes. And I can see the ramp from our home as well. So you know that they're struggling. Because otherwise, you know, once they get into, within the bay already, I mean, they're gone. But not so. Is it possible that, for that, I'm not sure. Any outstanding emergency proclamations that, that is out there that governor can help us to move? And what is the effect? And Chair, I know you, you were at the AG's office at one time. When, does it have any bearings on a, on a emergency proclamation? That, how does it affect the feds? Because Corps of Engineers, do they agree? Or does having weight from a governor work in that instance?
Unfortunately, no. Because state cannot suspend applicable federal law. We can only suspend state law. So if there's an Army Corps of Engineer permit that's required, even with the governor's proclamation, we couldn't.
It wouldn't.
It wouldn't. So I mean, perhaps having an agreement with, with, so having a recurring set of funds for dredging, maintenance, we could possibly enter into some kind of an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers to facilitate that review process.
Well, because like I see, it's not the first time we're doing dredging at Hilo Bay. I mean, even before my time in the early 2000s. I mean, it, it happens, right? I mean, even before my time in the early 2000s, I mean, it, it happens, right?
So Ms. Stats just informed me that 2014 was the last time it was dredged. And so we recognize the dredging, but we have to come here to ask for the funding.
It's 10 years now.
We haven't been successful in getting the funding. And then we can't even start the planning or anything until the funding is released.
Well, we were lucky that we were able to get some funding last year. And with governor's help, it was released this year, but now we got the money. So, oh my God.
And we've asked the Army Corps, can we just go? And they said, there's no such thing as emergency dredging. You must get the permits. Same with installing mooring permit or moorings. We have to get the permits.
But we think with more better maintenance, we're not going to be in these crises every year. So rather than waiting every 10 years, if we had funds to establish a maintenance program.
Yeah, but you know what? Yeah. So having said that, this is not the first time they've dredged.
Right.
I mean, and we got the permits from the Corps of Engineers. So wouldn't that, they be sympathetic to?
Well, they're putting us under a nationwide permit, which is expediting the process. So it's three to four months. So that's pretty quick for the feds to push out a permit. So they have been working with us.
Okay, where's their office?
Fort Chaffter, I believe, but I can, I can find out.
Okay, maybe I should go visit. Maybe we should go visit. Okay, anyway, but I, I mean, again, like I say, I feel for my boaters. But you know, we're statewide senators. We're helping everyone else throughout the state. But boy, if it happens in your own backyard, it really hurts.
And so, you know, I've offered some folks, if they want, if they can moor their vessels in Reed's Bay, instead of having to transit the channel every, we could probably work out a temporary mooring with them until we can get the dredging going.
Did you guys offer that already to them?
We've been offering, we've been getting a lot of calls too.
Okay.
So we're, we're putting the offer out.
Okay.
So we're trying other solutions, sort of short term solutions, interim, and then longer term solutions. And we think a long term solution.
Well, for the short term, that would help if you can assist them. The only thing is, we don't have a ramp. Do we have a ramp at Reed's Bay? We don't have one. So how are they gonna go in and out?
Part of it was, we were gonna contact DOT Harbors and see if they could use a pier face there to load or they can load from the shoreline.
What about, what about the, when you get into the bay, Young Brothers goes in, we got the cruise ships, on the other side where the Coast Guard used to be in port, but they, they left Hilo, right? Because now their headquarters were Maui or came back to Honolulu.
I think Honolulu.
Because we had a permanent Coast Guard. Now that ramp on the other side of Matson, now if, so, can we check with Dre at Harbors?
Sure.
And who's using? Because that to me would be more ideal because Coast Guard was, had a boat and so there's a ramp.
Okay.
Can you do an emergency check, please?
We'll follow up with that and then we'll get back to you.
Yeah, then we can notify our boaters out there. Maybe you can offer them again, to me, it's better than the Reed's Bay because can you imagine them jumping in the water? Getting into their boat and when they come back, how they gonna get their fish out? Okay, all right, let's see if we can do that.
All right.
Oh, thanks so much. Okay. And you know, it's interesting too, because Coast Guard, yeah, that's federal. I don't think they even paid for that slips back then. And I noticed that when there's a yacht that comes into Hilo Bay, whoever allowed, sometimes we have these fancy yachts and they were parking. They were mooring at the Coast Guard side. So can we look at that? Okay, thanks so much. And I understand the boat that was in the water, there was a. Yeah, it was grounded for a couple of weeks. But did they, you guys were gonna charge them? The boat, the, the boat that was dropped into the water at the, at the harbor? I mean, yeah, oh, you guys didn't know about it? There was a.
Which one?
Hilo Bay, in Hilo.
A grounded vessel?
Yeah, I mean, it was a front page.
Oh, that was the very large vessel?
Yeah.
That was alongside the area?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did check and that was over $500,000.
That was what, just a couple of weeks ago?
Oh, no, that was an old one.
No, no, there was a recent one in front page and they did say they were supposed to pay. Can you guys check and make sure that they pay you guys? Because, or penalty or whatever. But finally, it was lifted, I guess, on their own. Okay. We'll, we'll continue then with SB 2156. Anyone else wishes to speak on this measure? Let's proceed, members.
I would like to just share that there's a FEMA debris removal program in emergencies.
Okay. Oh, you mean for removals?
Yeah, it's for dredging, emergency dredging.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. SB 2157. And this is with regards to relating to vessels. And this is beginning January 2025 requires rental kayaks to be registered and numbered with the DLNR resources. And this is a measure that we had last year. DLNR.
Good afternoon Senator Favela Doncic, on behalf of DLNR, we're gonna stand on our written testimony.
Okay, thank you. Uilani Naipo and Keoni Shizuma in support. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 2157? Hearing none, we'll proceed then with SB 2050. And this is, let's moving along relating to marine life conservation districts. This requires DLNR to establish and conduct the Marine Life Conservation District Carrying Capacity Program requires DLNR to submit reports to the legislature and adopt rules as well. Okay, Brian, are you testifying today?
Yep, we stand on our testimonies for.
Okay, mahalo, Ocean Reef and Ocean Coalition, Ted Boland in support. Fairwind Cruises in support. Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support. Uilani Naipo in support. Okay, anyone else wishes to testify on SB 2050? Hearing none, we'll then move on to SB 2057. And this is relating to beach park restoration. This appropriates funds for grant in aid to the county of Hawaii. And this is restoring the Kahuluiu Beach Park in the county of Hawaii. Michael, who's gonna testify on this one?
This one, Senator.
DLNR?
Yeah, Dylan Chang, we stand in support of this bill and stand on our written testimony.
Okay, this is a measure of last year, I believe this came up, maybe because the appropriation was not made. And so, okay, we'll move along then. Hawaii County Council, District 7, Rebecca Delegas sends communication in support. Hawaii County Department of Parks and Recreation, Maurice Messina. And for those on Zoom land as well and those not familiar, this is in Kona at Kahuluu Beach Park in, on the big island. The Hawaii County Council, District 8, Wendy Baez sends testimony in support. Kohala Center, Cynthia Puniholi in support. Cindy, are you on Zoom today?
Kohala Center, she's present on Zoom Chair.
Okay, aloha.
Aloha Senator.
Good to see you. Thank you. Proceed.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair.
We can't, we can't hear you. Can you get closer or IT, can you assist?
Can you?
Okay, proceed Cindy.
Okay, my name is Cynthia Puniholi and I am the director.
You're still fading out there.
Sorry, I wanted to, I just put on my written testimony.
We can barely, yeah, we're losing you Cindy. But we do have your, we do have your communications in support as well.
Thank you.
Aloha, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Fairwind Cruises in support. Deer Ocean, Christine Zaluske in support. Hawaii Marine Education Research Center in support. There's many support on this measure. There's 38 in support, no opposition. And thank you all who has submitted your testimony.
Chair, we have one, one other Zoom testifier, present on Zoom.
Is that the Isaiah and Solomon Herbert?
Yes.
Okay, aloha.
My name is Isaiah.
Aloha Isaiah.
I'm from Kailua, Kona, and I am six years old.
Welcome.
I support this bill. The steps on the south side pavilion are falling apart. The roof on the south side pavilion is slowly falling off. And Kahuluu Beach Park is falling into the ocean.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Isaiah, and I did see those pictures. And I agree with you. I think it's the entire area, the entire buildings are falling apart. But we thank you so much and I see that you're, okay, who's up next?
My name is.
You can finish this one minute, so go ahead.
My name is Solomon. I support this bill and I am 10 years old. I live near Kahuluu Beach Park and I have a lot of fun there. I like to snorkel there and stand up paddleboard and surf, but like my brother has said, it is falling apart. Like there are, there is falling in ceiling issues and some of the concrete is cracking and the sea walls are being undercut so that it is falling, so that it's in danger of falling in. So, please, please approve this bill.
Yes, can I ask you, Solomon and Isaiah, can you come up with, right up front? I have a question to ask you. Do you see the county of Hawaii maintenance people there during the day? And do you approach them and ask them when they're going to finish at least resurrecting your beach, your beach park, I mean, the facilities?
Well, usual, well, I don't usually see, when we go there, I don't, I do not recall seeing ever any maintenance people there. I do not recall seeing any.
Okay, all right, we'll try to help, but it's very unfortunate. And for you too, you understand that you are speaking to the state capitol and we're senators. This is not a state park, it's a county park. But we will try to help and assist the county in coming up with some plans, hopefully soon. And when you see, tell your mom and your dad, when you see the county folks, tell them that they pay taxes too and they should at least help to. All these years, I mean, the pictures I've seen, it's unbelievable. I think that if it was a state park, I don't think those managers of the park would even be here working because they probably lose their job. But we're trying to keep up with our state parks as well because tourists and the residences like yourselves all need to have some recreation. And Kahuluu Beach Park, I was a mayor there before, but that's heavily used. Okay, so when you see any of the county guys, go over there, tell them we'd like to see some improvements, okay?
Okay.
We thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wishes to speak to SB 2057? Hearing none, let's proceed to SB 2182. And this is, okay, DLNR.
Aloha Chair Brian Nielsen, Division of Water Resources. We appreciate you introducing this bill and we stand on our testimony in support.
Mahalo, Sierra Club sends communication in support. We have two oppositions, one from the Ocean Tourism Coalition and Quicksilver charters in support Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, Resources Legacy Fund, and Uilani Naipo. As members, any questions with regards to this ocean stewardship? Okay, and just to let you know that it continues on with the project that you were doing last year when we got it started. So, okay, it's just a matter of continuing this project. Okay, let's proceed with SB 2183. And this is relating to restoration of beachlands. And this amends the definition of beach restoration used in laws governing DLNR powers to engage in beach restoration to include activities undertaken to improve eroded beaches and degraded dune systems. DLNR.
Aloha Chair Noi, Senator Favela. We want to thank you for introducing this bill. We believe it will give us more flexibility in publicly supporting restoration of beachlands. We stand on our written testimony.
Okay, mahalo, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, Mary Alice Evans in support. We do have one opposition and this is from Starne O'Toole Marcus and Fisher Law Firm in opposition. Is there anyone else wishes to speak to this measure? Members, any questions with regards to the restoration of beachlands? Yes?
It's Dylan Eversong with the University of Hawaii.
Oh, come on up.
We submitted written testimony in support. I just wanted to let you know that we are here and can answer any questions. I'll stand on the written testimony.
In support as well.
Correct.
Okay, mahalo, thank you. Were you able, any of you were able to look at the testimony from the law firm? And did you end up seeing that testimony? Okay.
Thank you. So the testimony from the law. My name again, sorry.
Yes.
Michael Kane, Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands, DLNR. The testimony from the law firm suggested this bill would actually limit the type of activities we can conduct. We don't agree with that. I would note that our office engages in small scale beach restoration or we invest in small scale beach restoration programs. So we definitely don't want to remove them. The way this bill is written, it will allow us to invest in additional activities such as dune restoration and coastal plant restoration, not just sand nourishment.
Okay, all right. So you don't see any reasons of their testimony?
No, I think it's a misreading of the bill on their part.
That's what I thought earlier as well, reading it as, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone, yes, Senator Favela.
I'm not sure about, how is it deleted? Or was he guys are trying to do with this bill?
So yeah, I, I don't think it is deleted. I think that we use the word on sand management covers a wider variety of activities.
Okay.
So.
Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We did have some recommendations from Office of Planning. Did you get a chance to look at it? Because I think I tend to support some of the amendments that they recommend.
Introduce myself again.
Yes.
Michael Kane, Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands. If I can call up their testimony quickly, well, from memory.
Yeah, I think they're, they're, instead of using the word maintain, I think they're saying to use the word stabilize.
Right, so I, I do not like the word stabilize because to me that implies, like when we put in the T-grinds, that stabilizes the beach, that locks a beach in place. Beaches are dynamic, so we want to invest in projects or prioritize projects that allow beaches to ebb and flow.
Okay, and the second amendment is they want the words remove abandoned, remnant, man-made materials.
Right, and I believe.
And the recommendation is remove that, keep the materials abandoned on beaches and dunes. That risk, that poses a risk to public, delete the word and ecosystem.
Yeah.
And add health and coastal ecosystems.
Yeah, I, those suggestions seem to just rephrase what the bill said, so I'm not sure what the intent is. I can let you know, our intent is with coastal erosion, we often find rebar or cement of unknown provenance. We don't, it's World War II material, we don't know where they come from. So we'd like to be able to remove those. Other debris is already a county responsibility. Or if we know if it's a failed seawall, we can pursue the owner.
Yeah, and if you're there clearing up, you want to take away the abandoned remnants anyway.
Correct, we don't want to cover it up.
But they're saying to delete it, okay?
All right.
I'm, I'm happy you're here.
Thank you.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Yes.
Just to be more clarified, let me clarify. So the H, what, what is the HRS one seven one dash one five one should not be deleted? Is that what we're talking about?
Are we talking about the lawyers or?
Oh, he just said that, that statute, they just don't want it to be, should not be deleted. There's a lot of comments that I don't get.
Yeah, I think they just, they don't like the phrasing that we suggested. But again, I believe that's a misreading of the bill. Our reading of the bill is that it expands the number of activities. They feel that it's limiting the number of activities, so.
So, so what if the property that has all of this cement and rebar to get to the access is privately owned land? How, how you guys go about remediating or trying to get out those World War II and beyond cement with rebar that came, came ashore during Iniki and Iwo?
Yeah, so this bill is focused more narrowly on beach restoration activities or activities that we can fund using our beach funds. So it's, it doesn't cover everything, it's, it's sort of narrowly tailored.
Yeah, the reason for that, and I know it's before you guys came in, we had a landowner decide to take on backhoe and started removing these things because he wanted to build twenty-one cluster homes on that lot. Of course, you guys stopped him, but they had the entry of right of way approved. No, but, well, you guys wasn't there. From your guys' office without anybody going out doing an inspection and then they'll stop them. But they really had, I don't like to say damaged, ocean, it really got red dirt silk about maybe half a mile out from that land. So I just wanted to know if that's something that you guys are going to do, but you're talking about more activity, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're talking about restoration, that if it were to happen today would be one of our, a potential enforcement action.
Okay, yeah, I'll be checking you guys out later.
I apologize. Don Chang, Chair of the Board. I think the other thing that I want to add to this, and I appreciate that Michael is here, is, is also using these funds to restore, meaning to remove some of this, the, like, the abandoned sandbags that we find. So right now, the way that it's worded, the only thing we can do is restore beach replenishment. But this also permits us to utilize the funds to actually remove these very dangerous, I mean, down on the North Shore, the removal of these sandbags that have gone into the ocean has actually, in some cases, tangled up people, tangled up turtles.
Yes.
So this is really to empower us to have additional tools to doing that. So this bill is really necessary because the communities work with us. So it's to help us have more tools on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Let's proceed with SB five thirteen, and this is relating to fish ponds. This requires BLNR to create a standard lease application and programmatic environmental impact statement to streamline the process for leasing government-owned Hawaiian fish ponds. DLNR.
This is, so. We've got a lot of divisions under DLNR.
Yes, yes, oh, yes.
I'm, I can't even keep track. So Don Chang, Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. I mean, we actually have some concerns and comments to this measure as it, it is, and we, we stand on our testimony, but what I want to, what I want to clarify is that we see this as there's zoning, so there's conservation district use, and then there's land disposition. And you have to complete the zoning CDUP first before we can enter into a lease. So there are many numerous steps that are required. And I think we, we see that this measure as, there was one previously done for fish ponds. It really helped facilitate the process, but we see this as a little different. So we have added some comments to this, this measure. We support the intent, we support culture practitioners who want to continue with fish pond restoration. But we find that trying to develop a programmatic environmental standard lease application will be more burdensome for the.
You know, some of the fish ponds are not under our leases.
They, there are many private fish ponds?
Yeah.
Yes.
So how many do we have?
Oh, my goodness.
Do we know?
Do we know, Michael or Brian?
Because this has to do with leasing of government-owned. And I thought most of the ones that are out there and very active are community-based or private, but I'm not sure.
The, so again, Michael Kane, Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands. Most of the fish ponds that are active right now, again, are in private lands or DHHL, Department of Hawaii and Homeland Lands. Most of the fish ponds in state waters have not been repaired. I think there's one or two in Molokai. In terms of how many, I, when we did our programmatic permit for fish pond restoration, we're quoting the number four hundred, and that, even that number upset practitioners. Because when that count was done, they ignored ka'u completely. So now we no longer give a number for how many fish ponds there used to be.
Okay, I, I'm just wondering if they are, some that are inactive, but it belongs to us?
There are, so.
So maybe, is that the intent then?
And you're right.
If somebody wants to lease this, do you know if there's any applications?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And I think what that was part of our land division's concerns is that they're really, the inventory of state-owned fish ponds is not that vast. So for us to do a programmatic EIS for that or programmatic leasing would be, we would prefer to do this on a case-by-case basis rather than trying to develop a program.
If the community
Right.
and those of native Hawaiians want to participate, I would think that would be a good match because it would be public-private and that would be a big help. But I'm just wondering, okay, later on, if you can send to the committee what's outstanding in areas that is under our lease? That's not an up-to-date like fish pond.
Okay.
You know, that's, I, I shouldn't use the word abandoned, but I'm sure some are in marshlands as well, so.
No, I, I think Michael is correct. Probably the most of, many of the fish ponds may be on Molokai where they're publicly owned. But those are not necessarily the ones that are being restored. A lot of those that are being restored are private ma, private fish ponds.
Yeah, and the ones that we've been supporting, I mean, we and you and all of us are in support of the existing community-based ones because they're doing an excellent job throughout the state.
And if I may add, some of the community-based restoration efforts, like in Waimea Nalo or Maui, they have rates of entry from land division, but they're, they're not running it as a commercial fish pond, so there's no lease. Like for Honua Fish Pond, it's, it's volunteers working every day with informal stewardship agreements, but. So I'm, I'm not aware of what the demand is for leases, to be honest.
Well, it, this would be great to know if there's people out there in the community wants to help and assist in, you know, making, seeing some of these so-called leased fish ponds out there that would like to restore, but the activity that's identified on the programmatic environmental impact statement, that would be pretty cumbersome.
You're right, it would be.
I agree.
So I think it was, what was successful was the permitting process, and I think they had a program, programmatic process for that. And I think there's a desire to extend that perhaps to the state leases. But again, I, we'll, we'll try to get to the actual number count. But we are more than willing to support if there's a public, publicly-owned fish pond that the community would like to restore, we're more than willing to partner. Quite frankly, we would welcome that collaboration. But we have not had many requests. But we'll try, I'll try to get from land division the actual number of publicly-owned fish ponds that may, that could be part of this program.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, just think you might have someone here.
Okay, Department of. Department of Agriculture Sense Communication in Support as well. Olan Fisher, yes, aloha. And you're representing Kuaaina Ulu Awamoa.
Yes, aloha, Olanle Momi Fisher with Kuaaina Ulu Awamoa or Kua. And I, we stand on our testimony in strong support. And I will say there, there's another measure HB two-six-two-six that originally was drafted exactly the same way for fish pond lease streamlining. But in light of DLNR's comments on that one, we had some amendments go, that were passed through to instead focus it on requiring a native Hawaiian-based management plan for any leasing of state-owned fish ponds. And I, I also will say that from our community folks, we have, we have a statewide network.
Yes, yes.
And the folks that we, we talked to, actually, there have been a few that believe that, or they've, they've tried to go through the leasing process to restore fish ponds, and it's just been, it's taken far too long and it actually discourages them from, from keeping up with the process, let alone even applying now. And there's actually one.
Was that application for a, a DLNR lease then?
Yes, yeah, for fish pond restoration.
Do you remember what community that was?
It was a community in Molokai.
Oh, okay, so one of them did request.
Yes, and, and also there's a current lease, they're trying to go through the process Kalau Ha'i Ha'i. And they've actually been going through it for the past decade and have still not gotten it. And they're, they're very discouraged, they, they testified in the, for the other measure, HB two-six-two-six. But again, in light of DLNR's comments, we kind of changed our strategy. And so, yeah, I think it's not so much that there's no demand or that, you know, it, it, there, there definitely is demand, but people are discouraged from hearing stories from other communities that it's taken decades. And also, our, our, our comments from the other measure, we suggested removing the programmatic EIS portion in light of, there's already an HRS that is supposed to exempt fish pond restoration from EIS laws. So we would totally remove that. But, yeah, again, we just hope that this can at least go through, even if it is kind of changing the, changing gears a little bit, requiring a native Hawaiian Practices Management Plan, and we're here for any questions.
Okay, but the impact statement, I mean, actually would be, I think, more problematic to a lessor.
Yes, yeah, well, like I said, yeah, there's, yeah.
Because if the department has to go through that, I mean,
Yeah.
it, it would probably be a long time.
Yes, so we would, yeah, we would strongly suggest amending it to remove the EIS, programmatic EIS, but still trying to do a lease streamlining, if they're even open to that. But again, but again, if they're not, then just amending it to.
What was the, you said there was another bill?
Yeah.
Did we hear one already or it's in the House?
Yeah, it, it passed through the House side with amendment, so.
Okay, the same measure then?
Yeah, it was the same as originally.
But they made the amendments.
Yes, HB two-six-two-six.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
At least it kind of clarifies, you know, what's, well, what's necessary too. But, you know, we have a new administration now, so, you know, and the importance of fish ponds. And it has been growing, and you folks have been doing wonderful job throughout the state as well. And, you know, very interesting too, that the charter schools, if they're able to get to a stream or whatever, you know, they're now getting into building fish ponds in their own Kulianna area.
Yes, yes.
Such as the one at, under Kamiaia Schools on the Big Island in the east side.
Yes, yeah, and, oh, and just sorry, one more thing in response to how many fish ponds there are. So currently, since the fish pond permitting streamlining in two thousand and fifteen, there have been twenty-three lease applicants that have, currently have leases, and it's on the Koala Loko'i of Fish Pond website. And, you know, I mean, everyone knows there used to be over five hundred plus functioning fish ponds here, so, yeah.
Thank you so much, yes, this, this helps. Okay, we did receive with this measure seventeen in support and no opposition. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB five thirteen? Okay, hearing none, then let's proceed then to another fish pond. SB twenty-two ninety-six relating to fish ponds. And this appropriates funds to DLNR to restore and restock fish ponds by procuring fingerlings and limo and establishing a position to the department. Okay, DLNR.
Aloha Chair Vice Chair Member of the Committee Brian Nielsen, Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand on our written testimony in support.
Okay, mahalo Department of Ag Sense Communication in Support. Olan, you gonna stand?
Stand in support.
Okay, mahalo, okay, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support. We do have the Food and Policy Internship twenty twenty-four in support. And we do have five more additions, so there is a total of ten in support of this measure, no opposition. Anyone wishing to speak to SB twenty-two ninety-six or any questions, members?
Aloha.
Okay, Keone, is that you on Zoom?
Ah, yes, aloha, Keone Shizuma. Just, I'll stand by my testimony, I did submit, I will say, I mistakenly forgot to note that I'm submitting on behalf of Honolulu Hawaiian Civic Club, but it, it is in there as part of my testimony, but I'll just stand on my testimony, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Yes, we did receive that communication and mahalo. IT, I think. Yeah, earlier you were going to be on Zoom, but thanks for being here. Okay, all right, let's proceed then, members, to SB thirty-one sixty-seven. This is an interesting one relating to the Pacific Marine Fisheries Compact. And this is an administration. And this is an administration measure. It authorizes the governor to execute a compact on behalf of the state to cooperate in the Pacific State's Marine Fisheries Commission. And it establishes procedures for selection and succession of commissioners. DLNR.
Aloha Chair Brian Nielsen, on behalf of DLNR, we stand on our written testimony in support.
Okay, Big Island Reef Keepers Hui in opposition. Oh, we got four in opposition and one in support. Maki Morinoi, is that you on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, proceed, thank you for your patience as well.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Aloha, everybody. My name is Maki Morinoi from Hualua Loa, Hawaii Island. I stand on my written testimony in opposition as I question whether our unique culture values of Hawaii marine resources will be equitably represented in the compact. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo as well. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on SB 3167? Chair would just recognize La'apoi poi and Uilani nai poi in opposition of this measure. Interesting, Chair. This is an interesting compact. How is it related to, you know, the, what do we call it? The other?
Western Pacific Fish Management Council. So totally different. The Pacific State Marine Fisheries Commission holds no regulatory authority, no management oversight, no management authority. It's purely a coordination entity. And so you might ask, why, is Hawaii interested in coordinating with, you know, Washington?
Washington, Oregon, and Alaska.
So it's issues like invasive species. The number one source of introduced species to, marine introduced species to Hawaii is shipping. And so the Pacific State Marine Fisheries Commission is the main coordinator of the state's shipping, the entities that manage shipping into their ports. So it's kind of these, you know, Pacific-wide kind of coordination activities. We don't see them getting involved in fisheries management at all with here. Another big role that the commission takes is in fisheries disaster relief. As you might recall, the legislature was involved in providing fisheries disaster relief through the CARES Act funding. And the Pacific State Marine Fisheries Commission was the one that helped Hawaii with the administration of those funds. If we were to have to take that burden on ourselves, we would have ended up having to cut into a lot of those relief funds to provide those, the relief funding to those fisheries.
So the compact is already in existence?
Yes, it's in existence since the 1940s. Hawaii is the only state that, like, within the Pacific.
Out of the region?
Out of the region, but they wouldn't have nothing to do with any fisheries management. I saw in the testimony, there were some concerns about representation of indigenous people, so I believe we'd be.
Bring that up as well with the testimony, so what's your response?
So we have three seats, I believe. If we joined into this compact, we would be happy to bring in a represent, a representation of the indigenous Hawaii, Hawaiian community. But again, there's no management authority, so I don't know how much interest there would be in this type of thing, but we could commit to, you know, holding one of those seats for indigenous.
Okay, so we're not, we're not tied to just the two or three seats then? Because one was the chair, and then was two more, right?
Then there's two more, yeah.
So, so we can add at least on the.
Or at least, yeah, one of the three could be from the indigenous community, Native Hawaiian.
Because we're adding, right?
Yes.
Well, you don't mind adding another position? Or are we locked in that number?
I think it's three that we're, that we would be allowed, yes. And so one of those three could represent.
But we would come into ensuring.
But you know what, I think that one there, it did say how the representation would be, so unless we have to amend this. Let's see, okay, the three members, the chairperson in an ex-official capacity, and two commissioners who are representatives of the fishing community to be nominated, so.
So we could have a Native Hawaiian member from the fishing community be one of the designated.
Do I need to make an amendment to that? Because we certainly tend to agree.
I, I'm not sure.
This is an administration bill. Can we put, yeah.
And we can look into that to see if we're allowed to amend this or if this is the compact language.
Okay, we'll recognize the communications into the committee report then. And as the measure moves for continued, maybe can you guys then bring that up into the chair as well?
Yep.
When it goes there. Okay, thank you, all right?
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, was this, I was just wondering if this appeared because of the organization of mayor, the governors? I thought maybe, but it was through your recommendation then?
Yeah, we've been, it was actually working with them, with the CARES Act funding that we started working closer with them and realizing how much technical expertise and potential funding that they could bring to Hawaii. And so that's, and they said, you know, you really need to become a member of the compact if you want to get, you know, more.
And I assume the governor is accepted? Because this is an admin bill? Yeah, because he'll be making the appointments, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think one of the strongest, one important component of this, as Brian said, is biofiling. We're finding that invasive species are coming through shipping. And if we can have a network with the other Pacific region, I think that can help us better protect Kauai from some of these invasive species that are coming in through our vessels. So I think this is a good measure for us.
And this is US, yeah?
Yes.
So the Philippines and all the others on the other side of the Pacific, the international side don't qualify?
No.
Okay, it's a compact within, okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll proceed then with SB 3268. This is relating to aquatic resources. It prohibits any law, ordinance, or rule from establishing restrictions on the type of gear used for subsistence fishing. Okay, this is a testy one, DLNR.
Brian Nielsen, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand on our written testimony. We appreciate the intent to provide comments.
Okay, all right, Olan Fisher. Okay, Sierra Club in opposition.
Good afternoon.
Oh, okay, you're on, sorry about that, proceed.
Okay, sorry, okay. Wintonaka Circle of Hawaii, we are in opposition to this bill. You know, as written, it would allow 150,000-plus non-commercial fishers to use pretty much any kind of fishing gear, which, you know, as we know, could create management chaos that would only exacerbate the multiple other factors that are impacting our fisheries as well as subsistence fishers. Just to take a moment off to add like a personal observation. You know, when this pandemic started, I basically fed myself for a year from subsistence fishing. So every other day, I'd go to a different spot, maybe spend 45 minutes, and that was good. Then never have to go to the market and increase the risk of me bringing something home and getting my grandparents sick. And this is all in Oahu using like all legal gear. So when folks from, you know, other neighbor islands are saying they can't subsistence fish, then it, you know, makes me wonder if gear regulations is the issue. And in fact, we may, we need more regulations, which is why, you know, so many Native Hawaiian subsistence communities are concerned about this bill. And happy to answer any questions the committee might have. Otherwise, we respectfully ask that you hold this measure, thank you.
Thank you. Philip Fernandez, I think I see you already there on Zoom, is that you?
Yes, I hope you can hear me.
Yeah, the Hawaii Fishers.
We stand on our written testimony in support of the bill. Yes. So I'd like to make two additional comments in addition to our written. First, the original bill was very poorly written, and amendments are required to make this bill palatable. And it's very unfortunate that the original bill caused so much confusion. But I think we can fix those things as we go forward. Second, I'd like to point out that the legislature banned the take of sharks in the 2021 legislature under HB 553. And that bill was passed, and the ban of sharks went in. But the legislature created a carve-out for allowing subsistence fishers to take sharks by permit. And this is the kind of thing that we're asking for here. So unlike the previous testifier, there's no intention of having any gear or any method be allowed. The intention here is to maintain the current regulatory rules that regulate any gear that is regulated and any method that is regulated. And I think the subsistence fishers as well want to abide by all bag limits and all size limits that are currently law. So just wanted to make sure that that was understood. Thank you very much.
I have a question, Phil. The measure you did say is the length, it's a bad bill, but is this the one we're looking at, 3268? Or are you talking about the House measure?
Both. The companion bill also has, was not clear enough. And I think it caused a lot of confusion among the public that it was a bill that allowed subsistence fishers to do anything that they wanted. That is not true, that was not the intent of the bill, I do not believe. I believe the intent of the bill was that everybody would continue to abide by all of the rules that exist. And it was concerning things like the shark bill that provided a carve-out for subsistence fishers.
Do you have any recommendation on the foreign amendment? Or you're talking about this measure, right, 3268? That.
Yes. In our testimony, we provided a list of amendments as well as the Fishers Working Group, part of the Division of Aquatic Resources, also submitted identical list of amendments for consideration. And those amendments indicate that the subsistence fishers would abide by all rules that have already been promulgated by the Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Okay, Phil, just to, because you have two testimonies. One, the Fishers Working Group, and then the Fishermen's Alliance for Conservation. So the one we're talking about, you're saying that you recommend some amendments? That's the HFACT one?
Yes, yes, I'm currently representing HFACT. I think there'll be others.
Those are the amendments you're talking about?
Right, and there are others, I believe, in the conference room there who will support the Fishers Working Group amendments, which are basically the same.
Did the House hear their measure?
Yes, they did, and they deferred this measure.
Okay, all right, thank you, thanks, Phil.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Aside from, oh, there's another person on Zoom, Maki Morinoi?
Aloha.
Aloha.
Maki, again, I am standing on my testimony in opposition for this bill, thank you.
Okay, Maki, then you're not clear or understand that there's a recommended amendments to the measure? And you've heard Mr. Fernandez from Kauai?
I think if it's in alignment with the recommendation given by the Milo Lea CBSFA and other cultural practitioners that have been at the forefront of giving recommendation around gear restriction, the word no gear restrictions is what I think is the challenge and the issue here.
Okay, DLNR, you kind of understand the recommendations? Or I'm not sure if you're privy to the recommendation from the testifier from HFACT? You have it, you have that copy, okay.
I haven't seen the HFACT testimony, but I saw some of the recommendations from the Fishers Working Group.
Okay. Will that work better than the original measure? Okay, let's, you can get back to us. So far, there's 12 in support and 13 in opposition as well. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to SB 3268? Come forward.
I just have one question about drone fishing.
You gotta, you have to come up if you're, yeah.
Kate Thompson, boater chair, vice chair, and hi, Senator Pavella. I wanted to say that there's been some late-night drone fishing at the Aloei Boat Harbor. They're not supposed to do it, it's illegal. But I have seen them out there a couple times. And they put like, they put a hook on a drone and then drop it in the deeper water and then pull in the fish from there. And so where the place they're pulling in the fish from, yeah, Kate Thompson, sorry, is the, is the, like, kind of where the Turtle Canyon place is, it's a little bit deeper, and there's some bigger fish. So I had, you know, I think that maybe some places that might be like more isolated, something like that, might actually be okay. I don't know, but I do think it's something that should be clarified in a bill, because it's like modern technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have some fishermen in the, in the audience here. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 3268? Come on forward, I know you've been waiting patiently, and thanks. So perhaps you can catch your flight back.
Aloha. My name is Godfrey Akaka Jr., representing the Native Hawaiian Gathering Rights Association from Oloka'i, representing families across the state. We're in strong support of this bill and the amendments. I'm also a member of the Fishers Working Group. What the gentleman stated from the Sierra Club is right. They want to make more fishing regulations, and they're just continuously attacking the subsistence fisher. And so what we left to do? We left to try and create some kind of protection for us, like this bill. And exactly what he also stated, during a COVID, there's data that shows that during a COVID, all of the fish came inside. So what is happening is people attacking the subsistence fisherman. But I think maybe you guys should consider banning, instead of banning fishermen, ban tourism, you know? So what is the expected outcome? You expect to see fish over here, you blaming the fishermen, but you have all this commercial activity. All of these things not coming into play. And then furthermore, in relationship to gear type. So with respect to Milo Lea, Kipahulu, Ha'ena, you know, they all have their traditions, yeah? My family tradition is innovative, we use monofilament, we use metal hooks, we use spear gun, anything that is efficient, because our traditional and customary practice is to eat fish and put the fish on the table as effectively and efficiently as possible.
That's the old school of fishing.
Yeah, so, and we're not doing damage to the environment, you know? We're doing it in a way that is managed for our family in our coastline, and we are the resource managers where we fish, so, thank you. I'm available for questions.
You heard the previous speaker talk about drones?
Yes.
Okay, have you seen that activity on your island?
So, that activity, yes. So, listen, if it's posing a hazard, so we're not, we don't support, for example, if you're using one. For example, if you're using one long net, and the thing gets washed into shore, and you just leave them, you don't even go get them. We don't support that. You know what I mean? Now the thing damaging a reef. You got to take the time for going, clear that thing off. You got to be responsible for that. So the use of gear, if it's used effectively, safely, efficiently, that's what we support. Now, with the drone, I understand-- I have a friend in Waianae, a fisherman. They're getting issues with that too, yeah? Where the boats coming in and it's posing a hazard, getting, the lines getting caught in the props as they coming in. So I understand, I believe that there's already a law that was--
Yes.
Yeah? Set in place that it's-- They made it illegal for using drones to drop lines because of the safety concerns.
Okay. Yeah, part of the recommendation from the Fishers Group does include subsistence fishers will not use gear, manner of use, or harvest meth that would damage any fishery or gears. So seems like that would probably be a manner, and I'm not sure if we should also add the word "gear" and drones. I don't know. Our friend from Kauai, do they use drones there? No? Okay. Okay, the measure he's talking about--
The legislature banned all drone fishing, I think, in 2022.
Yeah, that sounds familiar. Okay, so there's no need to include it in any of the changes?
They banned it for actually carrying the fishing and dropping, but you can still use it for spotting.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for taking the time. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 3268? Please come forward. Okay. Aloha.
All senators, for letting me testify on this measure. Clayton Kubo, Waimea, Kauai. Our intent was never to bring back anything that is prohibited, that is banned. Never our intent. We just wanted to make sure that we can use methods that we're using now, which is legal, and we can use it from here on out. Because, you know, I've been to a lot of meetings. Not just one meeting or two meetings a year. I've been to a lot of meetings, a lot of hearings, listening even on YouTube, BLNR hearings. And when you hear, just blatantly, people just considering banning forms of gathering, it's like it gets under my skin. You know, we want to-- As for me, I want to speak for myself right now. I try to be as efficient as possible when I get into the ocean or even on a vessel or even on a rock wall. I'm not going to bring one woven coconut basket with me and trying to catch a mahakat. No, I'm going to bring my flashlight, glove, basket, and just harvest, and I'm out of there. As efficient as possible. So reiterating, our intent was never to bring any dynamite, chlorine, or whichever is prohibited. Mahalo for you guys' time?
Put food on the table.
That's right. Food, it's about food. Mahalo.
All right. Okay, did you guys-- Did you have a chance to look at Phil's amendments?
Yeah, yeah, we took a look.
You have any comments? You could leave with that? Because apparently--
I think the problem is the definition of subsistence, you know, is so broad. It's challenging to separate a subsistence fisher from any other non-commercial fisher.
Yeah, Olan, you had your-- Yeah, please. And you know what? I think we're running into, running out of time. We needed to vote on these measures. We got one more, I think.
Okay, yeah.
Sure.
I know some other legislators, especially on the House side with the identical bill, had issues with if this is even unconstitutional or not, the subsistence definition. And I also wanted-- I had a question if this, if it's passed out, even with the amendments, if it would affect community-based subsistence fishing areas?
Okay, thank you. And this measure, if we decide to go with some amendments, it goes to judiciary as well? So that part will be addressed. You know, your comments as well.
Just DLNR quickly.
Senator Favela.
Just, I guess-- I know there's confusion, but the miss-- President Governor, how is these restrictions, the impact on people who are fishing for their families? This is the problem right now. Because, you know, the guys going out there that using the things that their fathers, grandfathers, grandpas, whatever, been teaching them. When you use the word "ban" or "prohibit" when it comes to gathering rights, it's a problem, man. I just, I just like know if this bill passed, I mean, what kind of clarification that you guys are offering to the fishing community that just wants to feed their family? That's just bottom line. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Don Chang, on behalf of DLNR. I don't think we're looking at-- At-- Now, again, this isn't our bill. This is-- So we're responding to the language. But I don't think we're trying to interfere with anybody's constitutionally guaranteed right of traditional customary practices. They can do that. I think that another issue with the bill is just the broad language for enforcement purposes. Because I think we recognize that subsistence, those who just want to provide true subsistence, that's already acknowledged in our rules, and we try to accommodate that. I think it's just the broad-- The definition that's being proposed here-- You know, it's-- There are existing definitions of subsistence or traditional customary practices. So does this definition-- Is this definition inconsistent with existing laws? I think that's one of the issues that we're grappling with.
Right.
Brian, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, and, you know, the testimony by HFACT that I reviewed and the testimony by Godfrey and Clayton, I think we agree with the majority of that testimony and the importance of subsistence. And I see that as, you know, one of the major jobs of the Division of Aquatic Resources is to manage our fisheries, to provide that subsistence so people can feed their family. But I don't know why we need a law for us to continue that. That's part of what we do through our rulemaking and our management. So I think that's where we struggle with, well, why does this need to be in a law? And how are you defining subsistence? I think it's in those little details that we're struggling with.
Thank you, thank you guys.
So with that said, when our fisherman goes out, as they say, they're doing what they have been doing, like Molokai or Kauai, will they be penalized for going out to catch fish?
I don't think so. You know, the department's not introducing any bans. We've introduced regulations to put limits on, you know, bag limits and that type of thing, maybe seasonal closures. But in terms of all-out bans, you know, I can't think of anything that we're working on currently or that have done recently that would be an all-out ban that would really impact subsistence fishers.
We recently adopted-- The land board adopted the herbivore rules. There were a lot of-- There were a lot of testimony on both sides. We are open, especially on the island of Molokai in Waianae, to carve out something that's unique to that community. So we welcome the opportunity for the Molokai community. If our existing rules are not, are inconsistent with their practices, we're more than willing to entertain further discussions with the Molokai community to carve out something separate from that.
And I think it's more than Molokai. Kauai is here, and I think this measure comes out of Kauai as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much. Let's proceed then with-- Godfrey Akaka, are you on Zoom? Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. You did already. We'll proceed with SB 3168. And this is another administration bill, and this is relating to taking of marine deposits. It authorizes DLNR to approve permits for research, education, management, or propagation purposes that include the taking of sand, dead coral, coral rubble, rock, soil, and other marine deposits seaward of the shoreline. DLNR.
Brian Nielsen, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, standing on our testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Okay, Maki Morinoi, you're on Zoom. Proceed.
Aloha, I'm standing on my testimony in opposition of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Uilani Neipo, she sends comments. Robert Cobson, comments as well. Is there anyone else wishes to speak to SB 3168? Okay, hearing none. Senator Favela?
DLNR, I'm sorry, Chair.
Okay.
I just like, because I had a-- There's a question.
We got five minutes, less than five minutes, actually.
I'll be as polite as I can.
Okay, okay.
The reason why I want this clarification because I had a guess on my OLEL program about deep-sea mining. Is this something to curve of that, too? Is this part of the restrictions of deep-sea mining within our state waters? Because I know federally, we cannot do anything. I know Councilman, I think Ed Keats is working on something federally. But is this something to help protect our interstate of our precious resources?
I'll just add something, and then Brian can add to that. This is really-- The purpose of this bill is intended to make both our statutes-- We have-- Again, we have numerous divisions. So land division, they implement 17158.5. And it currently doesn't allow the taking for like education, research. Like, we issue special use permits under Division of Aquatic Resources. So this bill will actually make those two-- It will make 17158.5 consistent by letting the take for research and education. But it does not permit the take for commercial mining. That, this bill doesn't do that.
Yes.
Yeah, we, you know, we would have strong concerns about deep-sea mining, especially in state waters. But this wouldn't add any further protections to that.
Oh, okay, thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. IT, because we're-- We need to vacate this room in a couple of minutes for the next committee to use Room 229. Members, the recommendations for all the measures on this agenda for Monday, February 12th, we need to defer the decision-making, although I wanted to do that today, for this agenda to Wednesday, February 14th at 2:00 p.m. in Room 229. So all measures will be on that agenda for decision-making. And sorry about that today. Many important bills that discussions is important at times. Okay, so this concludes then the Committee on Water and Land hearing on February 12th. Okay, thank you.